You good to just go?
We're good to go. I mean, once we get to some of the items in the work session, we need them, but before then, we really don't need them.
Yeah, okay, cool. Let's, uh, let's start. Jamie, you can start with the sunshine statement if you don't mind.
Is any, but before we start, is anybody recording and?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see somebody is, okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Be advised that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the sunshine law in the following manner. Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January 7th, 2021 and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Jenny?
Here.
Ms. Pareo?
Here.
Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Burrell?
Here. All right, thank you, Jamie. Jim just texted me, said he'll be on in a minute, so we should be in good shape. Before we get to our work session items, we have a few action items to get through. First, we have ordinances on first reading. This is Township Ordinance 2021-01, the first of the new year. Uh, this is ordinance to extend the municipal budget appropriation limits to the cat bank. It's pretty standard stuff we do every year. Does any discussion? If not, I'll seek a motion to approve.
Motion timeline.
Second, Virginia. Mr. Jenny?
Yes.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Hi. All right, next we have ordinance 2021-02, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract for the sale to convey an affordable housing unit at 207 Wildflower Place. We've been doing this a lot recently, but it's a part of, right Jeff, is this the?
Well, this is actually, um, there are three units that the township owns because they went to, uh, the property owners lost the, uh, the, the units and the township ended up having three of the units. So this will be the first one we've had an opportunity to sell. We've had them for a number of years and we, we have found the buyer and gone through the whole process to, uh, have that person, um, processed by HAS, Housing Affordability Services. So this is a good thing. We won't have to be paying the, uh, maintaining the property, which doesn't take a lot of maintenance, but we also have to pay the condo association fees every month while we own it. So this is a good thing. We'll be down to two units after this.
That's great. That's great. As soon as I said it, I remember what, you know, what we were talking about. So that's great to get it off our books. Can I get a motion?
Motion timeline. Second, Jenny.
Mr. Jenny?
Yes.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Hi. All right, next we have our consent agenda. I'm not going to read everyone, but, uh, it's resolution 2021-16, all the way to resolution 2021-19. I think the most important one there is an executive session at the end of our meeting to discuss, uh, personnel matter and litigation with, uh, Dumphy's Landscaping. Can I get a motion?
I move, Virginia.
Second, Lynn.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenny?
Yes.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Hi. All right, moving along, we have motions. Can I get a motion accepting the report from the tax collector and township clerk?
So move timeline. Second, Lynn Jenny.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Next, I need a motion accepting the report of the CFO, including the December year-to-date revenue report, year-to-date budget report, and the December check register.
So move timeline. Second, Lynn Jenny.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Hi. Next, we have a motion authorizing the payment of bills, including all purchases made under the cooperative purchasing agreement. Can I get a motion?
I move, Virginia.
In a second.
Second, Lynn Jenny.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Hi. And our last motion is a motion granting mercantile license to Five Guys on 1341 Fairview Boulevard, Suite G.
Don't move timeline. Second, Lynn Jenny.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Hi. I think that was the best motion of the day. You can never deny five guys. So now on to our work session items. I am gonna, my apologies, this is the first meeting, I neglected to organize these better. So I promise we'll get that fixed, but we're going to deviate a little bit, um, to accommodate, um, some folks who are joining us tonight for presentation. So in order to get to that, we're going to do item number five first, which is mark, it's marked number five. It's the discussion to fill the vacancy for Ward Three Council. Tom is not leaving us, so it's Ward Three. We did get, I did forward everybody the, the information with that from the chairman of the Democratic Committee in town. And there are three names for us to consider. But I think everyone's had ample time to review that, so I'll ask for some, you know, some thoughts. But before I do that, I just want to, you know, Sal, if you could give just for the record, a quick overview of how we got here and why we're considering these three candidates.
Right, uh, yeah, happy to, thank you. So, uh, ju- just for the purposes of the record, there was a letter received by Mr. Mormando effective December 31st of 2020 of his resignation. Because Del Rand's, uh, form of government is a partisan form of government, what happens is that the party from which he was elected, in this case, the Democratic Party, uh, they nominate the successor to fill, uh, the unexpired term until he's eligible, that he or she, whatever that person would be, to run in the next general election, assuming there's enough time. So my understanding is that the local, uh, township or county committee members of the Del Rand Democratic Committee have met and based upon that, they have sent a list of three names in accordance with the state statute to you all as the governing body, and it's your statutory function at this point to review those, uh, names submitted to you. Certainly you can have discussion, it's open discussion, and determine from those three names who you would, select to be the replacement. If that individual is selected, then he or she would be, uh, appointed, they would be sworn in. And, uh, again, given the time on the state statute, they would run in the general election for the balance of that term.
Great, thanks, Sal. I appreciate that, uh, explanation. So everybody knows, you know, this isn't a handpicked list from, from council members. This is submitted by the Democratic Committee, the chairman submitted after they met. So, uh, we have three candidates to choose from. Uh, as you know, we have, uh, one is John Uco, uh, second is, uh, Jack Moore, and third is Marlo Smith, all who, I think most of us just know from being involved in town. And, um, you know, some of them are on some local boards here, so they're, they're names that are pretty familiar. Um, you know, does anyone have any, you know, considering this, this weekend, does anyone have any, any thoughts or insights about these particular three that we can consider?
Yeah, Council President Tom Lyon, um,
Go ahead.
Obviously, I, I've worked with Marlo and John on the, uh, zoning board. And I don't know, Jack personally, he's got impressive resume, especially with the service to our country. The, all three are great individuals. You know, I have a lot of respect from the zoning board with Marlo and John. Lynn knows, uh, he's worked with them, as have I. I think we have three great candidates, so I think we're fortunate in that aspect, uh, that we really can't go wrong.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think, um, we really do have three great candidates, and I think there's a bad option, uh, that they submitted. They always make our job challenging, for sure. Has anyone else have any thoughts considering these, you know, these three, three candidates?
Let me just echo what Tom said, uh, Mr. President, uh, both John and Marlo served well on the zoning board. Both are engaged, uh, you know, people who are involved in the, making the decisions based on information that they've read and reviewed. So I think, uh, both are good candidates. I don't know the third person, but he seems to have quite an impressive resume as well.
I, I, I agree, and I think, I think, you know, our general sort of consensus, or at least, you know, one thing I always liked was, I mean, I didn't do it myself, but pulling people up from the boards and the committees in town, you know, before they serve. I think it's a good way, um, you know, not to flush them out per se, but, you know, to see if, if public service is something that they're comfortable with, and, you know, it's, it's a lot different than serving on a private board, I, I've found. So, you know, folks who've been on the zoning board, planning board, or some of these committees, um, you know, they get their feet wet and can see if it's something they're, they're interested in. Um, and I know with, with John, uh, Uco and, you know, Marlo Smith, they, they've done that for sure. You know, any, any other thoughts from anybody here?
Not, I'm not sure, is it, uh, so, you know, obviously, all three of those are folks that, that I know as well. You know, uh, this is, this is one of our more difficult decisions. Uh, it certainly, uh, I don't get a vote in this, but, uh, you know, uh, they're all, they're all really qualified. I know that, uh, I've known Marlo Smith for many years, or, you know, our children have gone to school together. I've, uh, seen and we've appointed him to the zoning board, uh, a number of times. And, uh, he, he's kind of been that, that steady, that steady service guy that, that, uh, just comes through when you, when you need him. He understands, he understands the, uh, the applications. He's a smart individual. I know, I, I, I like with and, and I'm friendly with the other two candidates as well, but, uh, you know, uh, I don't, I don't get a vote in this, but, uh, I'm, I'm really, if, I mean, I don't know whether we're supposed to give our opinion or what, but at some point, somebody's gonna have to make a motion. But I, you know, I, I truly am a fan, and, uh, I know that, that Marlo was re- waiting for the right time, uh, to be involved at this level, and this seemed to be the time that he, he agreed and got involved, so, uh, that's my recommendation.
Thanks, Mayor. Won't you, do you miss not having the vote anymore?
I'm not sure yet.
Right?
Give me a couple of, a couple of meetings. Uh, right now, I keep waiting for Jamie to say my name, and she, and she doesn't, has, so far hasn't said it, so.
It's, it's all good. Uh, you know, I've, I've actually spoke to, to the candidates and, you know, um, I, I do think Marlo Smith right now would be, um, a strong candidate to, to put on, um, uh, council. I, I think his, his resume is impeccable, uh, in terms of he's, he knows the government side of things and can, you know, give us that viewpoint on council, you know, I mean, I, I would support Marlo Smith, but again, that's going out on a limb here. I'm not really sure what everybody else thinks, so if there's any other thoughts, you know, we're happy to discuss.
You know, Council President, uh, yeah, I, I, I think you have to make choices, and I think John Uco is someone who is valuable on the zoning board. John, uh, he's very diligent about, you know, preparing for the applicants. He has a good mind for that, and he can be a little rough and, and a little, you know, tough sometimes, which is okay. I mean, you know, you, you need that. But I think Mar- John, what do you think, Tom? I think, uh, Marlo, I, I really like, and I'd say I, heads a, a little bit above, you know, because he has a very even, he's even-handed. Uh, he doesn't get real riled up about anything. He asks good common, quite good common sense questions, so I would have no problem with Marlo.
Sorry, I muted myself. I, I, I agree. I've, I've heard great things, and you know, you've had the pleasure of serving with him. I, you know, you and Tom, I, I haven't had the pleasure of serving with both of them, but have heard great things from other people, you know, as well as both of you, uh, which, you know, which is a good, a good sign.
Uh, can I, can I make a motion? We appoint Marlo for the vacant, please, thank you.
Your motion is heard, so it's second. It's second. I believe it's going to be, uh, solicitor Sal, you can, uh, double check me here. I think it's a resolution, right, Jamie or Sal to, to appoint?
It's a resolution, yeah. Correct. Jamie's nodding as well, so it's a resolution.
Okay. So do you want us to, to vote on that motion and then do the resolution, or just, do we just jump into the resolution?
Well, you, yeah, I mean, I, I think it merges with the resolution, so you've got, you've got a, a motion, uh, by Mr. Lyon, a second by Mr. Jenny. So it will be resolution number, Jamie, help me out with our, our sequence here, it'll be 2021?
21-20.
21 dash?
20. 20.
20, okay. Um, so 21 dash 20, do the resolution, motion and second to appoint, uh, Mr. Marlo Smith, uh, to the unexpired term vacated for, uh, Ward Three by Mr. Mormando. So motion and second.
Yes, so we wrote all the?
Yep.
Jamie?
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Virginia?
Hi, got it?
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Hi. So congratulations, uh, Councilman Smith, I can now say. I, I believe he's, he's on the attendance list, is that? If he's here, we can, okay.
Well, procedurally, Mr., uh, Mr. Burrell, procedurally, you know, a- at any point in time after this resolution's been adopted, an oath of office can be administered and the, the new councilman and can join the proceedings.
That's great, thank you very much. So if, if Councilman Smith, you can hear us, um, if you're willing and able to take the oath today, we, I'm sure the mayor would, would love to do that.
I would love to do that.
I wasn't lying, I knew he'd love to do it.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Are you ready?
Councilman and mayor, the floor is yours, go ahead.
Got, got the Bible here, I'm ready.
Awesome. Uh, you have, you have any guests in the room with you you'd like to, uh, have hold that, or you're gonna do this?
Uh, you know what, I think I'll have my, my son hold the Bible for me.
That'd be great.
Just hold it there. All right, so I'll stand up.
There we go. Very good. So repeat after me. I, Marlo Smith?
I, Marlo Smith.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Councilman?
All the duties of Office of Council?
For Ward Three?
For Ward Three.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith?
And I will bear true faith?
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Very much.
Please, done.
Congratulations, Councilman. Welcome, welcome aboard.
Appreciate it, thank you so much. I look forward to, uh, being a member of, of the council and, uh, working with everyone on, on the call here, so, uh, it's exciting to.
Awesome. We'll have, um, a little baptism by fire here. You're gonna jump right in. There's no, uh, no warm-up. You know, we, we can help you along the way here. There's really nothing, I think, that requires any action, so, um, it's more just, you know, listen and, and stay astute here. And, uh, we'll provide you, Jamie can get you a pack, the agenda packet with the supporting information, um, you know, afterwards, I guess, right? You can refresh. And Jeff, as always, has a nice binder of, uh, booklet of new orientation and things like that. He'll get you up to speed in the, in the coming week. So congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Now, at, at this time, we're gonna move to our presentation from Community Solar. Betsy, you can hear us, you're all good?
Uh, yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, first I just wanted to congratulate you all. Congratulations, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Jenny, uh, Mr. Burrell, and to you, Mr. Smith. We just, uh, I, I just really appreciate the opportunity to, um, watch us wearing in because it's the, uh, the basis of everything we do, and, um, I wish you all well, and, uh, good luck in all you do in 2021 and beyond. Um, I don't know if you, if I have the ability to share a screen, uh, but I'm going to give it a shot and see if it pulls up, just a second.
You should. I, we just turned, uh, any panel should be able to. Perfect.
Reason it's not, okay, there we go. Can you see everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I actually represent Solar Landscape. The program, the statewide program is called Community Solar. It was a, a part, it is a part of the 2019 Energy Master Plan that came about by, uh, Phil Murphy signing the Clean Energy Act of 2018. This program is, um, is brand new. It's in the second year of a pilot. It is different from any other solar program that you might have heard about before. So I want you to, you know, be able, this is our opportunity to ask questions, to learn about it, and to hopefully support, uh, the effort to bring two such projects to Del Ran. We, uh, it is around roof space, and so it affords the opportunity for people to participate, so it's access for all. The state of New Jersey and Community Solar, I'm going to explain that program. I'm going to explain how we fit into that process, projects that Del Ran has, and then answer any questions you might have. If you can all see this, um, I, uh, the way it works is the panels are put on the top of rooftops out of sight, so not allowed to be on the grass, uh, as per the, uh, the guidelines of the program. And in particular, we're looking at 60601 Del, um, Del Ran Avenue. And, um, the, uh, they go on the rooftops, then they're sent to PSCNG for delivery. And then the, the residents in Del Ran are the first able to take part or participate in the program and get to buy and subscribe for the electric through that program. The power that's generated on the top of the roof is not to power the, the, um, operations down below. That would be called behind the meter. So this is going out to the grid and then to your residents. Sorry, it's not advancing. Um, it's brand new. It, it is about justice and access for all. So people who have apartments or condos or don't have the right sightlines on their roof for solar can participate. Fifty-one percent of the electric that is generated must be sold to low and moderate income families. It, uh, who were not able to afford the economic, to participate in the economic benefits of solar energy. Everyone who participates and subscribes gets a 20% discount every year on their electricity cost. It's an easy enrollment, no, no long-term contracts, no fees. You can get in or out anytime. And, uh, the way we stay in community is we're going to partner with nonprofits in Del Ran who will help us subscribe to program, and then we will help them with their fundraising efforts. I think we can all agree that our nonprofits are struggling, um, and they could use that, that financial, uh, benefit. It is not third-party, and it is not energy aggregation. I don't know if you had any problem with aggregation in Del Ran, but in Pensacola we did, and it was a nightmare.
Could you, this is, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt your, could you explain aggregation and, and what that means? Just so that we know what you're talking about, what the nightmare was?
That's okay. Oops, I just went, I clicked on too far. So aggregation is to create an aggregate. A solar provider or an energy provider would get the municipality to make everyone in the town participate. And they had to opt out if they didn't want to participate. We thought there would be significant savings. And at the, the first time we did it, there, it indicated that there would be significant savings. The second ti- and then it fell away, and those people went away. The second time we were approached, we thought we were gonna see the significant savings, and immediately their bills went up instead of down. So who was left holding all the complaint calls? The township. So, uh, we've had a, we've had other municipalities that we're working with say we don't want any part of it because they think it's going to be aggregation and an opt-out program, and, uh, and we have to, you know, re-educate those people who have that experience. These are the projects that we were approved for in, uh, 2000, um, well, in the first round, the 2020 approvals, these are all being, uh, all up and running, except for one is still under construction. I, uh, I have, I am consulting with Solar Landscape since I've gotten off of Township Committee because of their work in Pensacola. They were responsive to the needs of the residents, to the property owners, and, uh, they have a very exciting job training program that I'm about to tell you about. So as I said, we, they like to stay, or we like to stay in community, and so, um, so they engage with nonprofits for the job training program and the community support, housing authorities. And, and to just lay on the job training part for a minute, there were students who were enrolled in the Edison Job Corps program at the time that COVID hit. And, you know, everything kind of in education went belly up or dead stop. And, um, Edison Job Corps allowed us to take a building on their property, on their, uh, campus and share it with GAF Roofing, a large roofing company. So the, the individuals who were still there at Edison could take advantage of learning the roofing trade and the solar install trade. And, um, and we were able to help get 100 students trained as solar installers through that program. It can only get better from where we are right now, as far as this, uh, growth industry is concerned. This is a young man who was at Edison Job Corps, and he was studying for his HVAC trade certification. So he decided to take a look at what was happening with the solar install program and came over, uh, and, you know, did the training, and now he's graduated. He has a certification, he's up on the rooftop, and he's making $62 an hour. So we're no longer talking about the ability for our young people or those who may need to be retrained to get a living wage or, um, or, uh, excuse me, a minimum wage or a living wage, but rather a si- a family sustainable wage. In the, uh, we're participating with, uh, universities and colleges. Here are a few. The, the certification is the North American Board of, oh, gosh, uh, Certified Energy Professionals. I always forget how to do that acronym. So they can get that certification. We will help them to study for it as well as the, the exam fee. So not only will people get trained, they'll be able to get their paper that says that they're, they're ready to go anywhere in the north, in North America as a solar installer. Uh, they can also learn about the office work that goes behind solar energy, as well as get up on the roof with a foreman. In Perth Amboy, you see those two buildings. Those were one of the first year, first year one projects, and, um, they were in Perth Amboy, and the mayor there received an award from the Housing and Community Development Network of New Jersey for her work in, uh, establishing the jobs and, you know, having, uh, made a brownfield development a priority. In Del Ran, these are the two sites. Uh, they're next to each other at 60601 Del Ran Parkway. You'll see that each, the system size of both of them, and how many homes they will power in Del Ran. Again, if you do 170 and 110, 280, 140 of those, or a little bit more, have to be for low and moderate income families. Uh, that's the combined size, 280 fam, uh, That's the combined size, two hundred and eighty fam, uh, local homes. The Delran projects will have meaningful positive impact and do, uh, and remove three hundred and thirty-two metric tons of carbon dioxide from entering the local atmosphere. I believe you have a green team as well, Sustainable Jersey promotes and supports highly, highly supportive of this program. And, uh, Delran can get twenty-five points just for endorsing and supporting Community Solar. So, um, I also like to share that Solar Landscape as a company is what I would call a vertical company from the ground up. So they will, first of all, go through this process to apply, get the, and then we will, you know, hopefully get approvals to, to come back to you in Delran. The first step is the approvals with Board of Public Utilities. And we will, you know, come before your planning and zoning, construct, own, operate, and maintain the systems for twenty years for the term of the project. And we want to be able to be good community partners. So if you're doing maybe a rain garden or a community garden or some sort of, um, environmental activity, I can guarantee you that will show up with shovels and, um, possibly, uh, financial backing to, to make that a success. It's, it's a, it's a commitment to community, and that is the premise behind the program. I think that BPU has, has asked the developers to be the ones to educate the municipal governments in this pilot. Once the three years is up, I, they will establish back best practices. But the program of putting solar panels on rooftops, uh, in order to power the homes in the grid and to remove our, uh, reliance on, um, fossil fuels is very real effort. And this is just my contact information, and my colleague Kevin Dunshee, who is my direct boss. I am available for questions now, or, uh, as follow-up, just to let you know, we are working with municipalities to, um, to request a, uh, a support resolution. You do have two projects in Delran. Ideally, we would be asking for two because that's what the BPU is requiring. There are separate applications for each site. But, um, we currently have, uh, well, five in, uh, resolutions already received. And I think we will be around twenty, you know, very shortly. So it is something that we are getting, um, very positive feedbacks on.
Well, I, I, you know, I think this is great. Actually, was very impressed, uh, I didn't get any of that out of, that, I didn't get this much out of the materials I read before. So thank you very much for taking your time out of your night and joining us. I know the mayor has a question, but I, I mean, I whole, I think it's a great idea, idea, I'd love to support it. I mean, I'm only one person on council, so I'd have to get, you know, discussed with council, but, um, you know, council have any other questions, I know the mayor does, uh, mayor, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, that'd be great. First, Betsy, I, I, when you were on earlier, I wasn't, I didn't know who you were. And then I said, but I know her name, and I, I didn't realize that you were on council in Pensacola or committee, I guess they have there. So I have a couple of, of questions just as they came out, just so that, I, I like to make sure that I heard things correctly. So this is an opt-in, not an opt-out, with that correct? And, and anyone can participate as long as they, I guess, as long as they have an electric bill?
Correct.
Correct.
Now, we, we do have the requirements for the low and moderate at fifty-one percent. So if, um, uh, for lack of a better word, a wealthier part of town says, oh, we're going to take advantage of this, and they just all start subscribing, we have to make sure that, that our low and moderate has been, uh, taken into account. We can't oversubscribe it with, with people who are not in that class of, of resident.
Okay. I'll, I'll get to that question in a second, there, I'm just making sure there's no fees and no, and no commitment.
Correct.
Okay, um, so, so what happens if we, if we don't get enough affordable, uh, those folks that qualify as affordable homes? Is that we need to do a better sales job, or we have to wait until we do kind of thing?
So, um, I, I apologize for not stressing enough, the municipality doesn't do any of the subscribing. So what we're going to do is work with nonprofits who are local to Delran and, um, and find out who's serving your, uh, low and moderate income families. Sometimes that might be your senior population, sometimes that might be people who are, um, uh, doing food distribution or somebody from a church. And, uh, they, they put us in contact with those people, or they help us subscribe them. And, um, we don't require, so, so the number, what was our number again, two hundred and eighty? So a hundred and forty is really probably not that hard to reach, I wouldn't say. And we cannot turn on the project until we're almost fully subscribed. But that's all on the developer to do. Now, some developers may come to you in another, you know, another year, you know, for the next session, or even this year, they could still, and subscribe by doing direct mail. And we really don't want to do that because we want to keep it, um, through a trusting entity. You know, we want to benefit your nonprofits, we want your economic engine to be in Delran. We don't want to pay somebody outside to do that work.
Great, I, I have one last question, so is it limited to two eighty, or?
This particular, these two projects, it's around two eighty, so
What part?
That would be a question I would, um, feel better with my boss. I think it, it's based on the number of kilowatts, right? And once you reach the number of kilowatts that those two, uh, arrays of panels can power, you can't do anymore. And, um, so we, you know, another, uh, entity, so we're really not in competition with others, Community Solar, uh, developers, only in this round for the application for this pilot program, there's a little bit of, uh, you know, work to try to get the projects approved.
Great, thanks for your answers, it, it sounds exciting. Thank you.
It is, it is exciting.
That's great, you know, I was thinking about when the pandemic kicked off, we did work with the school and a couple of the churches to find folks who needed, you know, an extra hand. So I, I'm definitely sure we can find a hundred and forty people who could benefit. You know, I think that's great that you're using, you know, the assets and the resources in the town to solicit that, uh, rather than spend money to do it. I, I, I think it's, I think it's great, my, my only question before I, you know, ask council if they have any others, is, did you get approval from these spaces on Delran Parkway to do this, like?
Yes, sir, so that is a requirement of the application as well, so, um, and that, i, in this, uh, scenario, that was the driver. We had to make sure that we, we had sites, and then we, then, uh, so you had to have, uh, site control, and then you needed to have community engagement. We are required to make sure that we are doing the educating of the municipal body, which is very challenging, you have to know through COVID and end of the year and appointments and, and, you know, elections and everything else, so, um, it made my job a little bit more challenging, but that, and then to, uh, then to reach out to the nonprofits. And sometimes you might be, you know, people on your staff or, or on, uh, on council may be the ones to say, you should talk to pastor so-and-so from this church, you know, and, uh, and that is not a problem. It's not something that you're subscribing, you're just recommending the, the nonprofits that, that you know are successful in Delran.
Great, right, does the council have any, you know, comments, thoughts, questions? You want to discuss now, I'm, I'm sure we'll, um, and I know you're seeking a resolution, I believe, of, um, our commitment to the project. I, I think we, you know, I, I don't hear any objections, but, um, you know, I think we'll, we'll touch base offline if there's no other questions and, you know, review it with legal and make sure we're good to go. And, um, I'm sure if there's support, we can get this done fairly quick.
Thank you, thank you so much for your time, yes?
I have one additional question, like
Okay, go ahead.
If people try to sign up for this or opt-in, how do you verify their qualifications? Because I did see the one where there was levels of salary and stuff like that is
Right.
Residents going to be asked to verify income, stuff like that, and how would they do that?
So on the application, um, the, which is online, and in some cases our low-income families need a little help, so sometimes we would be, you know, on the ground to help them do that. But they, um, they bring their bill from PSCNG, and, um, and they, um, that tells how much power that, I, I kind of lost my train of thought, that tells how much power is being generated. And I believe that that ties in somehow, I'm not sure how they figure out their, uh, financial status, but they are not asking any question like that of the subscriber. So it is determined somehow, and I'll, I'll get more information. But, um, uh, I do know that the application does not ask for your income, just ask for your, your bill from your PSCNG, uh, account. Make sure that you're, you know, that you're, uh, that you have a, uh, an electric bill, and then also, uh, how much power is, is needed for that home.
Okay, yeah, Mark, Marco Di Patista told me to ask you a question you couldn't answer.
He's a, he's a friend of mine.
Did he know that that was going to be the one?
He didn't.
Well, he's our new mayor, you know that, right? Yeah, good, well, thank you, Tom, I appreciate that. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, actually, I have a, a really quick question, um, you, you mentioned that there's a twenty-year term. And you said that you operate, maintain that for the first twenty years. Uh, I know that, uh, I got a background in energy, so I know that the panels typically have a, you know, useful life of around twenty-five years. What happens through that, the twentieth year?
So, um, I don't have a crystal ball. Uh, I do need, again, a little bit better a, ability to answer this particular question, but, um, we would hope that they, that the, the property owner would be renegotiating the lease. In other words, we are leasing the space on the top of their roof. They may decide that they want to take full control over those panels. I think that, or that solar energy, maybe there's a different type of operation down below. In other words, you know, full manufacturing in the building. So that would all be negotiated in the terms of the agreement with the property owner. And, uh, if the program was still, uh, as, as, as established, I believe that they would just replace the panels and keep going.
Got it, and I'm sorry, just one last quick one, so I know this is strictly just for panels, but would there be an option if, like, say, if you wanted, if the, the, the actual site wanted to install battery storage, you know, to capture the energy so that it can be used, like, you know, when it's not, the sun's not shining?
It's a good, I, that's, that's a good idea, and I'm just going to write it down. I don't know that, I did want to say, because it just, if I could, really quickly say that in this program, the only options are rooftop, what they call canopies, which are, uh, carports on parking lots, or on, um, landfills, or what they call floating, which is above, uh, water treatment facilities. No green space is used or allowed to be used to create this, this, uh, this opportunity. Um, and this, you know, we have enough, uh, uh, what do you call it, impervious surfaces, you know, that we should use first before we put panels on somebody's, uh, green acre project. The other thing is that Bob Smith, Senator Smith, um, is thinking, is looking to adore, introduce legislation to have new construction of warehouse space be solar-ready, which is, uh, puts it squarely on the, the builder to do that, so, so that this program can keep going.
Great, and
But I will ask about the battery storage, I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I meant to, I wrote it down, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, you can, we, we can get those answers offline and, you know, at your convenience, and we'll take it from there. But I have one question from the public, they, they messaged, I don't know if you could see that, but, the question is, what if more than two hundred and seventy apply, how is that prioritized? Uh, how do you prioritize those over the two seventy spot?
Um, I think when you hit the, when it's first come, first served is what I'm going to venture to guess, because it's going to be subscriptions, rolling subscriptions, so, you know, but, uh, we have to have some way of making sure that fifty-one percent are low and moderate. So there's got to be some way of checking that number, um, so you know when you're reaching two eighty or whatever, and that you have hundred and forty-five, whatever fifty-one percent of, of two eighty is, um, already, uh, as low and moderate. But good questions for me to follow up with you on, I'm sorry about that.
Well, we gave you a little homework, hopefully you don't mind.
Yeah, I read, I do, I, I do my homework, thank you.
Good, awesome.
I appreciate the time, everybody, thank you so much, and stay safe, and I look forward to working with you and hearing from you, uh, shortly, take care.
Thank you very much. Same to you, take care.
Okay, bye-bye.
All right, great, that was a great presentation. We can talk about that more offline, you know, as we caucus and, you know, think about and digest, uh, that presentation. We did send in the revised agenda, there is the, uh, some of the supplemental materials, so we can take a look at that again, uh, moving forward. But we're going to get back on track with our agenda, we're going to now go to what is marked item one at the, at the top there. Uh, this is the fiber right-of-way agreement. In speaking with our, uh, solicitor, Mr. Siciliano, this seems to be kind of run-of-the-mill Jeff or Mr. Siciliano, do you have any, any, uh, any information to share regarding this?
Uh, I mean, I'll certainly defer to Jeff, but my comments earlier, uh, to the council president is that I, I've seen this in other Burlington County, uh, towns, it, it is true that the BPU has approved it a number of years ago. Uh, my only observation, this is their standard form agreement, which is very one-sided to their benefit. Um, we, we've had some, some comments and revisions to make it a little bit more fair and equitable. Uh, and, and so if council likes, we can take a look at and, and send, send back, uh, an agreement that's a little bit more fair and equitable, uh, um, in terms of the signature. In terms of the ultimate implementation of it, they do have a right-of-way, uh, although they're signing these agreements, I, I've not seen them actually implemented in any community yet, but I think the process is they want to get everything signed, and they'll move forward with it, so.
Great, I mean, Jeff?
Yeah, um, same thing, as I, I had some comments written down that I'll, um, I'll forward over to, uh, the attorney for him to review. I'm sure there's probably there's some of the same comments that he would make in that the, uh, the agreement is one-sided, and we'll get you those comments, and I'm sure he's already have, has them, but, uh, I'll forward them over to his office.
Okay, great, council have any, any objections to this? So, are they seeking, do we want to talk to them and get that all worked out, and then we'll approve it from there?
Uh, that's, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, great, so between Jeff and the solicitor's office, you guys can, can handle that for us? Great, thank you, moving right along. I lost my page, hold on. There's too many papers. One second, here it is.
Reese next.
Yeah. Thanks for keeping me on my toes, great, so next we have, uh, number two, it's going to be the tree ordinance, which this was actually, for those folks who were on council at the time, this memo was written last year by the green team. They're required to do this, uh, every year for their sustainability, um, certification. But I, you know, we flagged it at last year because there were some improvements to some ordinances that, you know, we, we thought about discussing, and then, um, twenty twenty became a unique year, so I don't think we ever got to it. So, uh, just bringing this back to the table, um, there's some things on here that, you know, I'm pretty impressed with. Some of this, you know, I think, uh, members of council may not be, have an appetite to entertain. We're happy to hear the mayor's thoughts as well, uh, but just, you know, in, in my mind, if, if I could take, take lead a little bit with this, you know, I'm, I'm pretty impressed with the compensatory planning, uh, planting, you know, portion of the statute, which is, um, where if a developer comes and they take down, uh, a certain percentage of trees, they'd have to either pay us or replant those trees so that we can put those up in parks or community, you know, places around the community. Um, instead of just cutting down the trees, um, you know, I think that, you know, this won't be retroactive. Obviously the developments that were approved in the recent settlements and all wouldn't be touched by this, but there is some stuff. Um, you know, in the future, there was that light old property on Route 130 that's potentially all wooded that would benefit from, um, and ordinance like this. The other part that I was pretty impressed with was the, uh, 20% of the tree species. Uh, we had that issue, um, in my neighborhood and around here with the ash board trees, the, at the ash trees and the emerald ash board going around and doing some destruction. So, you know, if we can put something with a little teeth, you know, on our books, we may be able to prevent that in the future. Um, you know, those are the, you know, my thoughts, uh, you know, on there, there's some things about fee structures for cutting down trees and things. Um, you know, so by no means tonight are we going to, to rewrite our ordinances. But we just wanted to kind of get people's, you know, pulse of the situation, what folks are comfortable with, if there's anything that excites them. And, uh, you know, we can start maybe long-term crafting this refining this ordinance a little bit. So any thoughts?
Yeah, I, uh, I was a person, I think, I think it's a, uh, certainly a, a lot of good stuff in here. I'm certainly in favor of preventing further, uh, tree cutting in the township. Uh, particularly large, you know, swaths of trees being cut down as well as, you know, just the neighborhoods, people just cutting trees down. Like people like in here, it says, uh, you know, for example, so they don't have to rake the leaves. I think that, um, perhaps they can come back with, uh, or meet with us and give us a presentation on this. There's a lot of stuff in here.
Yeah.
And, and I would think that, uh, there have to be some limitations and some consideration for common sense. But, you know, I, I could see where they've gone off on there. Due due diligence and have done a good, great job of it, you know?
Yeah.
Like to see more of it, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, and they went through, this is kind of a full, you know, briefing of, you know, the, all the possible areas that can be changed in this ordinance. Right? So this isn't, in a way, it's almost a wish list, you know, this is the, you know, the far end of the spectrum of what we could do in a perfect world. Uh, right? And to Lynn's point, you know, some of this needs to be taken, um, you know, and applied to, to the, to the real world to a certain extent. But yeah, I, I'm pretty impressed. You know, maybe Lynn, to your point, maybe we get a couple, uh, council members and maybe the mayor all under, you know, purview of the sunshine laws and then maybe meet with them and discuss, you know, what they're thinking as well. Um, any, any other thoughts?
I think.
One more thing. Uh, you know, the, the thought is that the green team, we might, you know, ask them to do a, uh, a survey of the community of the trees, especially old growth, trees that are two, 300 years old, trees that want to be protected. Um, you know, they could do a survey of the types of trees where the, you know, their biggest concerns are and present something like that as well.
Yeah, I think they, they may have done, Depter, you aware if they did something like that or we hired a tree expert, right?
They did some, they did some work on the public areas, not as the private, on the public, yes.
And Lynn, we can get you that report. Uh, they did, I think it was, um, they surveyed every tree and the health of every tree on like our public park systems. And that's sort of where the idea of, there was a couple of bad storms last year that, you know, ultimately the public works had some money laying around. With the green team, they got together and replanted. Uh, but if we had this compensatory tree fund or procedure in place, you know, we may be able to plant more trees, you know, especially when they fall down in, in the winter storms or spring storms. Mayor, you had, uh?
Yeah, just, uh, first, let me say that I, that I, it was scary as if you were looking at my notes. The, uh, the compensatory planting idea is a great idea. The shade trees, you know, that variety, because, uh, I, I had a couple of ash bores that, or ash trees that, um, were, were taken because of that. I had to cut down. Uh, you know, I, as far as, uh, all, all of this, I, I love their ideas. The, uh, the only thing I can see that we might get pushback on would be, uh, a resident who wanted to remove a healthy tree, uh, for whatever reason they were doing it. Especially some of those lots that are, uh, in, in some of the more wooded areas. You know, I understand you don't want to cut them down. We don't want them to cut them down because of, uh, they don't want to rake the leaves. But, uh, at some point you get, you maybe you get a little bit too much oversight into the, uh, to the dues and, you know, the, the, the details. I don't want to say big brother-y, but it's kind of, you know, if you want to cut a tree, I have a tree that is precarious. It seems to be healthy, but if that falls over, I'm going to have a problem. Um, you know, so, so what do you do? If you, you need to, you need to ask somebody for permission to cut a tree down in your home. We might want to be, just be careful of overstepping that line. Other than that, I love their ideas. And, and, you know, we don't have, you guys don't have to implement, uh, all of them. But if you decide to do that, if you want to do a subcommittee, I'd love to be involved as well. Uh, and I'm. I'm learning, I'm learning my new role in this meeting. So thank you for the opportunity, council president.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah. And I, I think that was, I agree, everything, I'm, I'm pretty happy about everything here. My, my main concern or where I'm a little adverse is kind of, you know, drawing the line between when someone can cut a tree on their property, you know? In a perfect world on paper, it sounds great that you have to go to us, but, you know, when, where do you draw that big brother, big government line, you know? So I, I think that's the balancing act here. Any other thoughts from council? I mean, you know, ma- maybe we do a quick little subcommittee that we can, you know, chat with them and maybe iron out some of these details. Seeing no, uh, no objections, maybe we, we do that. I think that would be a good idea. So we can talk, um, you know, I'd certainly be interested in that as the green team, um, liaison. And Lynn seems pretty interested. Lynn said, do you mind if I volunteer you, voluntold you to, uh, help us up with this? You're on mute, but I think you agreed. Okay, great. Awesome. Great.
Yes, I did.
Cool. So I'll get you some, uh, their supplemental reports Lynn, and then we can all chat, uh, with them. And, you know, come back to council in short order with some refinements and some, some more, uh, tailored direction, I think would go a long way.
I'll be happy to participate in that as well. And when you decide to do.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, there, yeah, yeah. Glad to have you there. Yep. Great. Thank you. So right along now, we're going to go to, uh, we're going to switch over to Jim. You're going to, we got some gym items for us. These are going to roll right back in. We have the Stewart Avenue Storm Sewer, and then that goes right into the Stormwater Control Ordinance. So, uh, Jim, the floor is yours. But you're muted. Hey Jim, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. Uh, first of all, thank you for the appointment for the year. I haven't seen any of you yet this year. Happy new year and thanks. I appreciate another year of, of working for you. Um, welcome to members and everybody. Um, I'll make sure everybody has my email. You need to get ahold of me. Uh, you can email me or, or my call my cell anytime. Uh, rest of the members of the council and the mayor know that they can do that and I hope that's still okay. Um, just a couple of things on the agenda. The first one is Stewart Avenue. I'm going to, uh, share my screen real quick. And, uh, you guys should be seeing a sketch that we put together last fall. There was a sinkhole that developed next to one of these black squares, which is a storm sewer inlet that you see, uh, along a curb line in the road. Uh, this is on Stewart Avenue. I think that, that one of these addresses is around 4042 Stewart. And, um, so the repair to sinkhole, uh, we found a pipe in here as deteriorated. There's like an old metal corrugated pipe that runs up and down Stewart from all the way out to, to the outfall of the river. So in order to make the repair, we got to dig up the existing pipe, replace it along the section that we found it to be deteriorated. Uh, we worked with the sewer department to be able to get it and the DPW to, um, to get in here to figure out how much needed to come out. Uh, where it's located, we're going to have to replace and curb driveway apron and, and some of the storm sewer inlets. Uh, we do have a, uh, estimate of around 50, 60,000. We did get quotes to do the work at the end of last year that were around those numbers, but the, the, the quotes were above the bid threshold. So, uh, we gave a, a proposal to basically package this plan up with, uh, into a contract document set and, uh, put out the public bid and then, um, administrate the contract. So that's, that's on the agenda. The, uh, the request for authorization is, I believe, 6,000?
And then that's so you can go out to bid?
That will be, yeah, to prepare, to prepare that plan to, uh, to make it bid ready. Yeah. And then put together a contract and then go out to bid. And then once we receive bids, administrate the contract with the contractor to complete the work.
Procedurally, what we'd have to do, if you guys want to move forward this, and it is, um, we held off on doing it as an emergency. We felt we could get through the la- next couple of months. That's about it. So we would do a temporary capital budget just for this project and then do a bond ordinance for the project and then authorize, uh, at the same time authorize Jim to go forward with the, uh, putting together the bids and specs.
Great. Well, I, I think, I, I remember when you pulled up the, um, the, the concept plan, I remember, you know, when I reviewed it, I remembered the project, uh, we did talk about it. So I, I, I mean, I don't think we have an option. So I, I think we, we, we got to get it done. Um, so is, is there anything we can do tonight to, to make this happen or at least start the ball?
Uh, as, as long as you tell me to go ahead and con- and start putting together a temporary budget, we'll have it ready for the next meeting, the temporary capital. I'm sorry.
Great. Do we have to approve this request for Jim, for Jim or we're good, we're good to go?
Uh, like to do that at the same time. So at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Any thoughts, questions from council? Are we good? Great. I don't think we have much of an option. And, um, Jim, it's still you. We're going to perfect segue into the, uh, Stormwater Control Ordinance. Okay, this is very lengthy. So hopefully you can, uh, sum it up for us.
Okay. So, so some of you may or may not be aware, um, you have a permit with the state. Back in like 2002 to 2004, the state came out with a mandated permit you have to get to operate storm sewer systems throughout the town. It's a part of a response to a federal clean water act that mandated each state to mandate each town in the state to improve water quality of, uh, the, of the storm water runoff going into your streams or lakes, your, your rivers. Uh, so part of that, they issued, um, this permit you had to get. And with the permit was conditions. It's a whole slew of conditions, um, that relate to how the public works, maintains their yards, how you review development applications. How you go and inspect, uh, existing stormwater management improvements throughout a town and how you maintain your storm sewer that you go on. Uh, and also one of those requirements back in 2002, which, which was eventually enacted in about 2004-ish or 2002, 2004, 2006. Is you adopted a stormwater control ordinance. Well, it, the plot that, that ordinance applies to what we call major stormwater developments. Um, which are basically developments that disturb a certain amount of area or, uh, add in a certain amount of impervious coverage. And it sets a unified set of regulations that every municipality in the state has to follow and which are applied to the developer, what the design engineers have to do with their site plans to show that, you know, they're both, they're treating for, you know, reducing runoff, promoting water quality and groundwater recharge. So that was 2006, 2018, the permit was renewed. And with that, the state came up with, uh, new standards that are not very far off from the standards that were adopted in 2000, early 2000s. But they added some additional requirements for certain methods that are, I would say, a little bit more stricter, a little bit more difficult for a design engineer to accommodate, but it's supposedly in the long-term good for promoting water quality. So the ordinance before you, this, this storm were amended, storm control ordinance is a model ordinance that the DEP gave every municipality as an example to, uh, to adopt. You're mandated to adopt the minimum requirements that are in, in, that are identified in this ordinance, um, has to be adopted by March 2nd. March 2nd is also the date where NJDP's rules, um, which, which are, which are these requirements in this ordinance going to affect as well as RSI, as the residential site improvement standards going to affect. So this really ordinance really only applies to commercial developments in this town that do not need a DEP permit. The project needed a DP permit, they would already have to comply with DP's regs. If the project was a residential project, it would have to comply with RSI, which are these regs. So it's pretty standard stuff. Um, technical speaking, really what it does is basically eliminates developers from being able to build very large basins to mitigate their stormer runoff. They're, they're capping the amount of ru- area that can be drained into a specific detention basin or infiltration basin. So if you have like a warehouse project, you'll see about like 10 different small basins or infiltration ponds distributed throughout a site rather than like one big pond. Like you see behind, uh, Lowe's on, uh, in, uh, Fairview, um, crossing or Hartford Quarter. Um, I did add in, I'm going to screen share one quick, the ordinance, one section in the blue. Um, this is addition above and beyond what the model ordinance required. And what this does is give guidance for non-major developments, which our current ordinance is lacking. So if you're at the planning board or zoning board, somebody submits an application that is, you know, disturbing area that doesn't trigger the, the compliance with the rest of the regs, it gives some guidance on what, so that somebody can't like negatively impact somebody downstream from them. Uh, just so you can't increase runoff and he's got to maintain drainage. This is a pretty standard language I've been putting in all these ordinance. And just to give us some control. So somebody can't pave, you know, just under a quarter acre. And we can tell them that they have to mitigate that somehow. Uh, that's this section right here. And then this section here B, this is for just, if somebody does, this is for any single family property owner that's, you know, doing anything on their property. It's just a pretty, uh, gentle way of saying you can't do something that's going to adversely impact storm or runoff onto your neighbor's property. Uh, it's not very technical. It just gives us something that we can show that if there's a complaint after somebody does something that there's, um, there's, there was a regulation that says you can't do that. Believe it or not, there's nothing in the books right now that says you can't just like change or grading or put up a wall to stop somebody's runoff and come in under property. But you don't like it. This actually will prohibit that. Um, there's one thing we need to go into eventually. I don't know if I do tonight, but, uh, working with the construction office, uh, Jason, um, um, Jason, the construction code official, um, there's no requirement right now for engineering review. Whenever any homeowners do certain improvements, like put in an in-ground pool, uh, do some significant additions on their home or even build a new home on a single family home. Any sort of development or private improvements that do not trigger site plan or subdivision approval that goes to the land development board. There's really, there's, there's no oversight of, you know, the improvements they're doing on their real property. So one of the things he's asked that I, I tend to agree with him is to put in some mechanism to allow for that procedure. He says he's going to start requiring it with his, um, building permit application. So if a homeowner comes in for an in-ground pool or a significant shed or a significant addition, requiring it for engineering approval. Even though there's no ordinance that requires that now, he says he can do that through building permit code. I'm not really sure. But I don't know if the council at one point wants to consider implementing that kind of policy or procedure for certain types of projects. So should we ensure that whatever the homeowner is doing, if it's significant enough, it's not going to impact a neighbor. Uh, I do do it in another towns, other towns I work for don't have a procedure like that. So, um, we've had a couple of issues in the past where there's complaints and we were stuck where, you know, there was no engineering review. And we really have any teeth to go after homeowners or kind of limbo. Um, and it's depending on what the council feels, um, I can work with, with, um, Mr. Siciliano's office and put together some language for you, uh, to consider. So it does a little long-winded. Uh, any questions? Just let me know.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I know that we had that one issue on Astor Court where the home was built or re, um, redone. It was a whole mess and there was, it affected the neighbors and there really wasn't anything we could do because of what you were exactly talking about. And that was a major renovation project that, um, he took a little bit far and, uh, it did cause some problems.
Yeah. Now, it, can he, maybe this is a question for, uh, Mr. Siciliano or Jeff. I mean, can he just decide, is the building code allow him to do that on his own or does he need direction? The construction office need direction from council to do that? To require that, um, engineering review?
I, I'd have to, I, I don't know about you, Sal, but I, I'd want to see, I, I've made a note of that. I want to talk to, um, Jason to ask exactly what he's looking to do in that regard. I mean, there is something already in our ordinances that requires permits for flat work and, and things along those lines retaining walls. But, um, I think, uh, Jim is talking about something that goes a little further and that's something I have to talk and find out exactly what he's talking about.
Yeah, I'd agree with Jeff. I, I'd be curious to see what Jason is relying on in terms of the state statute. See how strong that is. There's no question. Um, see how strong that is. There's no question, adoption of our own ordinance would would be. Stronger or the strongest possible, if that's how council is leaning. But I I would have Jeff do that follow-up and then we can certainly communicate offline about it.
Yeah, I no matter what policy decision council decides, I just think we should make sure it's uniform across the board. Um, and not something where there's. Uh, what's the word? Just sole discretion, you know, and then we. You know, one person just deciding randomly, you know, based on his or her opinion and it's just going to create issues. Um, down the road. Um, so is that something? You know, stormwater ordinance wise. Or stormwater control ordinance wise, I you know, I have no objections. I don't, I didn't see any other concerns from council. So is this just the first draft that? Um, do you want to firm this up or Jim, what what are your next steps?
Well, if you want more time to think about. Setting up a review procedure for engineering review of certain. Home improvements done by on single family lots, generally speaking. We can separate that from this stormer control ordinance because we are on a tight deadline for this this stormer stormer ordinance. We have to have it adopted by March second. Which would I speaking to Jeff today would probably ask that you have it introduced at the next workshop. And then with public hearing to follow at the next available meeting after you get notice out. Um, so if there's going to be debate on and what we do with that, any sort of like review procedure, I can just pull that out. Maybe leave the comments I added in here now because those are very minor and they're not really. That forceful on anything. It's just really kind of giving saying, hey. Don't mess up your neighbor, which I think is, you know, basic common sense. But uh, and we could do that and then I can develop, we can develop our language to do another ordinance after that on like review procedures if necessary, if if desired. For like, yeah, certain.
Yeah, I I think that's smart to pull that out and then. We can get some clarification from Jeff's office and Mr. Siciliano's office about. You know, what leg is the construction office have to stand on the current, you know, law in place to require that. And, you know, should we enact our own policies? You know, I think that the big thing to to understand is if you're, you know, I spoke to Jim about this a little bit ago. You know, if you're doing a significant project, right, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, like if you're doing a pool, right, there's. There's some sort of engineers involved, you know, to get to that portion, you know, assuming you're not just, you know, digging it yourself. Uh, so the only additional cost. In theory would be the escrow fee, you know, to have one of our engineers review the plan. Is is that a good summary of what would happen, Jim?
Yes, uh, that's fair to say.
Okay, gotcha. So. So we are talking about adding some costs to the residents if they wanted to do some sort of. You know, large enough project that would trigger this engineering review. So I I I think. I think we'll we'll get some information from Jeff and the Mr. Siciliano and then carve that out, Jim. Uh, moving forward and then we'll take a look at it though and, you know, in the next couple of meetings that we like to get that. Um, you know, addressed.
Okay.
All right. Any other thoughts from council or the mayor?
Good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I guess it's in a form ready for adoption. Jamie, I'll share with you and Sal. I don't know if it needs to be like the formatting needs to be me- messed with to make it. Proper formatting, that's all.
Okay, great. So then after that, we can do it at the next public meeting. First reading. Okay, great. Then next, that. Community seller before executive, that takes us to the executive, but. Uh, before we get there, I like to walk something on the agenda if council would would entertain me. With the appointment of Councilman Smith. He effectively can no longer be on the zoning board, so that creates. A vacancy on the zoning board and also earlier this afternoon. Um, Henry Sing Singer resigned from the zoning board, so there's two positions. On the zoning board. Um. You know, at this time, I think it's important that we have a full zoning board. I believe there is an application. Going to be presented next Thursday, so I I think we should have a full board. So I I'd recommend and asking. For council to appoint. One additional person to the zoning board and that's the candidate who did not get. Um, the position today, which is Jack Moore. Um, John Uco is already on the zoning board, Jack Moore. Um, I spoke to him uh this weekend and, you know, he expressed interest in any board if he wasn't. Um, honored to serve on council, he he definitely was interested on zone, you know, zoning or planning. And um, there is a an opportunity here. On zoning, so I think it'd be great to get him involved uh before he decides he doesn't want to get involved. So. Go ahead, Mayor.
Interrupted. Um, I don't know if you, did you receive the resignation yet from?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Singer?
Yeah, it came in about five o'clock. Jamie, did you see that?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Hang on. Oh, good for you. Okay. Um, and and the other candidate that that we had talked about has not confirmed.
Yes, yeah. Great. So I'm having, what I'm asking council. Yeah, we're we're losing you there, Mayor. You want me to wait? Can you hear us?
No, I I can hear it. Just it was it was choppy.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking council to do is. We would appoint Jack Moore. Uh, to alternate one and then. We would move Joe Chaska and Maria Yezzi, who are both alternates up into the two open positions. So it would be reappointing. Uh, Joseph Chaska and Maria Yezzi to zoning board and then alternate one appointing Jack Moore. Uh, that does create, there's still one more vacancy, so we'll keep our eye open. Uh, for an alternate two. Uh, so that's what I'm recommending. Counsel, would you like to discuss that or if I could seek a motion? That'd be great.
Motion, Tom Lyon.
Thank you, Tom. Any seconds?
Second.
Thank you, Virginia.
Could I, could I just interject as a as a form of order here? Uh, can I make a recommendation that this be this be made a resolution? So we have a formal resolution in terms of the agenda?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Jim, Jimmy, by my count, we are at twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one would be the next resolution.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I I I think it's, I think it's a cleaner record that it will be a resolution appointing. Uh, the these individuals as as you've indicated.
Right. And if I could just clarify for the record, because I did not do a great job explaining who would be appointed where. Um, to the two open spots. So for Marlo Smith's spot, it'll be replaced with Joseph Chaska. And Henry Singer's spot will be, he'll be replaced with Marie Iezzi. And then alternate one spot, which is formerly Joseph Chaska, will be replaced with Jack Moore. And then there is a vacancy on alternate two, but we will worry about that in the near future. So Jamie, you can call the roll if you don't mind, please.
Sure. Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Virginia, we didn't get you there.
I I didn't hear. Hi, Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Barrow?
Hi.
Great, awesome. Congratulations to Jack Moore on his appointment and I'll think he's on and um. But we will uh reach out to him later tonight and let him know. Thank you guys for. Getting that done. We appreciate it. So we can have a full zoning board for the application uh next week. All right, before we go into our executive session, at this time, I believe. This is my first time, but I think we're gonna have reports from council, the mayor and our staff. Uh, as we normally do, we will start with uh Jamie Yeager is our clerk. Jamie? Do you have any report?
Thank you. Um, I just have two quick things. Uh, two quick items. Uh, one, um, earlier tonight, we released a road opening deposit for seven thirty-five Baylor. Um, the applicant has withdrawn their application for their road opening. Um, and has also requested the refund of the fifty dollar application fee. Um, if council's okay with that, we will do a resolution at the next meeting to refund that application fee.
Yeah, this should be no issue. Do you want to just do it right now or do you need to draft it?
Uh, no, it's it's fine to do it for the next meeting because we have to get the um voucher processed.
Okay, great.
Okay, and then the next item, um. Last year, we um did a resolution to waive the late fees for certain licensing. And I just wanted to keep it on council's radar that it's going to come up again. We are in um mercantile license renewal now. Um, so that, you know, if you wanted to um discuss that at the next meeting or um get that resolution on an agenda, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Great, great. And I mean, you send out. I think the issue we had before was um. Refresh my memory for the folks who were in the room, but. We, there was some issue around right when the closures happened was when the notices were going out, I think, and there was some concern that. People weren't in their office and getting the getting the mail. Uh, but you're still sending out notices, correct?
We are.
Like the people, okay, okay, great. You know, we can caucus with members of council and see if that's something we want to, you know, put back on the agenda. If you could just make a note, we'll probably add it to the next. Next agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it. Next, we have our township administrator, Jeff Hatcher.
Yes, um, the local finance board approved revisions to this statutory bet uh budget deadline again this year. These changes result in the following deadlines. The mayor's budget transmission to the council. Will take place on or before February twenty-sixth or the next regularly scheduled meeting after that date, which in your case is March second. So uh, but the mayor's budget to council has to be in by March second. Municipal introduction of the budget is by March thirtieth or in our case. Um, the next uh meeting, which is April sixth. And finally, adoption would take place. On uh our regular scheduled meeting, which is May fourth. So all the dates. Um, for the last, it's almost been ten years. I think that the state has changed the dates every year. So those are the scheduled dates for this year. Um, and we've been moving forward on the budget and again, you'll get the budget prior to. Uh, March second. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Jeff. We look forward. To that budget as always. And Jeff, if you don't mind, can you just send those dates in an email or something so I can put them on the calendar? Great, thanks.
It's actually going to be in your budget books, but I'll send it out early.
Okay, cool. I mean, whatever's easier, it's it's all good. Uh, next, I believe we have reports from. Jim spoke a lot today, but Jim, do you have any other reports from our engineering department, uh C M and associates, Jim? Winkowski?
Yes, um, yeah, there's a few things I want to go over. It's beginning of the year. Um. There's a lot planned for this year, some stuff that carried over from last year with the shutdowns. Uh, and other things we just, uh, it's just the coincidence. So some of you may know, P C G just did a lot of gas main replacements at the end of last year. Uh, and uh, they they moved forward already with resurfacing some of their roads that uh. Are not going to be have any additional utility work. Uh, real quick, it was like the Cornell neighborhood, Army Navy, uh Purdue and Auburn, those were done in December. Uh, and then recently, as of these last couple of weeks, they did a portion of Maine, Arch. Uh, and Ridgewood, Montclair, Drexel and Geneva. So those all have all been resurfaced. It's just also do some punchless work, but those are done. We did receive this week. Or or last week, I should say, uh, and Jamie, I'll I'll coordinate with you on it. Uh, the permits from road opening permits from New Jersey American Water. Uh, they have several miles of water main that they're going to be replacing, uh, starting uh the end of this month, uh, sometime in February. Uh, it includes Ithaca. I I'm gonna put this all in a report for everybody, so it's everybody has it in writing. And I'll work with Jamie and 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 everybody put it up, put something on the website. Uh, so Ithaca, Juniada, Lynnfield, Fifth. Uh, and Brown, Colby, Avon Court. As well as Fordham, Edgewood and Howard are all gonna have water main work done. Now, once New Jersey Amer- American Water gets done with the utility work, um. They have to do the main replacements and new services and then they they let the trenches sit. And so sometime around the summer and the fall, there's going to be a massive repaving operation by uh New Jersey American Water. P C G has to do additional roads as well as the township's road program project. So all these streets I listed that P C G hasn't paved already are all going to basically see new curb to curb resurfacing done. Except for a couple of streets where we'll see hash uh with road resurfacing. So you're getting several miles of roads being resurfaced this summer, fall with all new utilities. Uh, that are that are going to be replaced that this this late winter into spring. So it's a good thing. Um, also, Conroe Road, we're scheduling to have that resurfaced using the D O T trust fund grants. With a full length from um, from uh Haynesville Road to uh Hartford Road. Uh, we've been working with the county on that. Uh, there that the the bridge crossing at Sweets Run, the county is going to be doing some work to the abutments to replace them. That's why it's been a little bit delay getting this out the bid. Uh, but I don't know if anybody is aware of that bridge right now. There's only sidewalk crossing on one side and. And so they're gonna be worried, they're gonna be putting in a whole new abutment on the one side. Uh, power pit, but now it's gonna now it's gonna have sidewalk on both sides. So I've been working together really well with them. Um, get, we're gonna do some work to prep it. With our project and then they're coming, gonna come in afterward and get that completed fully. So. Again, and that project's all still funded by by the grant. Um. We're also, the the council authorizes to move forward with some traffic calming improvements on Temby Chase Drive and the Grand Boulevard. Uh, we got surveys done and base maps done, so we're gonna get those designs completed over the next month or so. And hopefully then I'll come back to the council with some of our ideas, costs. Uh, to finalize the scope and then hopefully we'll get that worked on in the summer. And uh, lastly, uh, the trail that the county is doing, uh, that's going to connect Amaco Island through. Downriver Drive uh going out through Pen um. To all the way up to um, the one park where. My Creek Road is, I forget the name. Um. That trail is going to be starting work around March first and they're going to be starting in Delran. So once they get through Delran on River Drive with their improvements, then we have, we still have our contractor from the two thousand nineteen road program on board to come in and pave River Drive that's been sitting. Waiting for this project to get done. So, um, again, I'll put this all in writing. There's a lot of stuff going on. And then we also have to talk about, you know, this year's capital in the upcoming meetings. Uh, we've talked in the past about maybe doing some concrete work at some of these roads that are going to be resurfaced by utility companies. Um, later this year and I'll work with Jeff and the and the mayor to uh present it to you. So, oh, and well, lastly, sorry, and Jamie, that road opening permit on Baylor. Can you just let them know that we're gonna be resurfacing the road this year? So if they're having second thoughts on our project. Uh, once the roads resurfaced, they're gonna go on moratorium. So um, if they want to give me a call, I can discuss with them what they were planning to do. To make sure, because we can probably saving on some resurfacing costs or something like that or restoration costs if we're gonna do it anyway. So I don't know, that'd be of interest to them, so.
Okay, I'll reach out to them. Thank you.
Unless anybody has any questions, again, I'll put together a status report on all this and send it to you and then uh if you have any questions, just let me know.
Hey, can I, can I just uh, just add? Um. There was some reference to a past practice about reaching out to Jim and he added, if that's okay. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, uh, all the members of council have uh. Can reach out to Sal or Jim if you have something uh that you need to discuss with them. Uh, you know, as always, we're careful about uh. The costs involved. If every one of us reaches out to answer, ask the same question. But uh, don't ever feel as if you can't can't talk with Jim or Sal. That's what they're here for. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I know, Virginia, you had had a question?
Um, no, I just wanted to say that um they paved Art Street and it looks great and they did it really quickly. They were like in and out. Well, I don't want to say in and out because it took two days, but still, it was shorter than expected. And it looks wonderful and it's very exciting to see all the roads getting done.
That's awesome. I'll let them know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Jim. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next, we have reports from our solicitor, Sal Siciliano.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I I don't have anything for uh public, but I do have an extensive closed.
Great, we're looking forward to it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Siciliano. And next up, we have reports from council. So uh. First up, we have our ward councilwoman, Virginia Parejo. Virginia?
Um, yes, thank you. I just want to congratulate Marlo. Welcome, and I look forward to working with you. And that's it for today. Thank you.
You, councilwoman. Next up, we're gonna go a little bit out of order, but we're gonna go to our brand new. Ward three council, Councilman Marlo Smith. The floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to say I'm honored to be part of the board and I'm sorry, part of the council and uh looking forward to working with everyone and. Um, and joining the meeting. So thanks a lot.
Awesome. Glad that, glad to have you on board. And we promise next time you'll have an agenda. You'll be a little more informed. All right, next up, we have our councilman at large, Lynn Jenny.
Uh, no report other than also like to congratulate uh Mr. Smith. Uh, great choice and I'm sure he'll do very well for the township. Congratulations.
All right, next up, we have our vice president of council. Tom Lyon.
Thank you. Um, like to say, uh, congratulations to Marlo. Think it's a great choice. Love working with them. Uh, love, love, love sitting next to you on the zoning board. Uh, it was a good, good time. And uh, looking forward to working with Sal. Uh, congratulations on the appointment. And Jim, continue working with you. Jim does a great job. He always has time, handles the residents when we have to go out there. Great, um, very, very impressive. He always has time, handles the residents when we have to go out there. Great. Um, very, very impressive. Like for anybody that's still on, let's, uh, keep, keep on the COVID, uh, train, wearing your mask, social distancing, all that, uh, very important stuff. Uh, because we're, we're still seeing a lot of numbers going up. And, uh, it's, it's heartbreaking when it touches home to you. And then, um, I know that, um, we did, without going into details, we did have a township employee get injured today. Um, um, hopefully it's not serious. Um, and my thoughts and prayers are to that individual and their family. And, and we just, hopefully it's not bad. Quick recovery and all that kind of stuff. I don't know if you wanted to touch on that, Jeff, but, uh, very concerned when anybody of our employees gets injured. So, uh, best wishes to that individual. Uh, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Appreciate it. Uh, next up, I have my comments, which will be very brief. I want to first congratulate our brand new councilman, Councilman Smith. Welcome aboard. Uh, look forward to working together and, um, you know, joining the team here. I think we're going to, you know, have a great team, uh, for this term, this year especially. Uh, so, you know, I'll be in touch with you shortly. You know, we'll all be in touch and, you know, welcome you. And we're here that to, to lead you along and, you know, get, get you in the swing of things. I'm sure you'll, you'll, you'll get right along with it and, uh, be right involved. So we're looking forward to that. Um, second, I want to, you know, I want to do, you know, echo the vice president's, um, you know, congratulations of, uh, Mr. Siciliano and Jim, uh, you know, for their appointment. Um, you know, Jim, I've known Jim for a while and, you know, as, as the mayor mentioned, you know, he's always accessible for calls and, um, I call him on the weekend and I can hear things in the background, but he's always uh, available. He's, he's quick with answers, especially text messaging. Uh, you know, he's just, and he's, he's really there for the residents. He calls and says, oh, you know, I already met with those residents last week. So, you know, I, I think it's great to have Jim on our team and, you know, to the other council folks, you know, please feel free to reach out if you have any concerns. You can reach out to the mayor as well, or Jeff's office, um, you know, and he can also direct it to Jim as well. Um, and finally, I want to thank everybody for their vote of confidence in having me as your, uh, council president. It's an honor to serve, serve you guys. Um, just getting my feet wet with this. So I appreciate you guys, uh, bearing with me. Uh, it's a little challenging as well on Zoom, but, um, I, I appreciate your concern. I spent about two hours today with Jamie making sure everything was perfect. So thank you, Jamie, as well. I appreciate that. So with that, I'm going to now turn over the floor to our mayor, uh, Katrin Bone. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Uh, I have a couple of things. I'll move quickly with this, but, um, uh, there, I have a number of items that I'd like to touch on in my report, first of, of which, uh, uh, we recently lost a, a gentleman in his nineties, uh, to COVID. That brings, uh, uh, residents deaths to six. It's not about the number. It's about the people that, that are impacted and their families. So we send our heartfelt condolences. And, uh, we urge everyone, please continue. Uh, it is as bad as it's ever been. Uh, there's hope on the, the horizon, but we're not past this yet. So I, I, I repeat, please remain masked. Uh, on, on other issues, uh, I've become aware that the schools are resuming their in-person and hybrid schedules, uh, starting January nineteenth. I would just, I mentioned that just so everyone is mindful as you're driving throughout the town to, uh, be alert for students who are walking to or from school or waiting at the bus stops. Uh, this time of year, it's, it gets dark early, but, uh, it's just when those students are out and about, uh, they're not looking out for you. So we have to look out for them. Uh, some residents have inquired about the Christmas tree pickup and, uh, they're scheduled to continue to do that through the end of this week. That would, uh, be about the fifteenth as Friday. Uh, following that, the trees can be dropped out off at the municipal building, but, uh, uh, believe me, it is much easier to have them pick it up at your curb than to, uh, find someone who has a pickup truck that you can, uh, ask to help you out. Uh, you know, we went through our first, uh, winter storm recently. Like to thank Public Works as, uh, they always work hard and do a great job, but it's also a pleasure to hear from residents who feel that, uh, they know that they're going to be safely able to, uh, travel the roads, uh, because Public Works and, and the guys that do all that work are always diligent and carefully plow those roads. Uh, there's a couple of other quick things. Uh, I had this conversation with, uh, Mel Anderson from the Historic Society. They're interested as always in reaching out. It used to be myself and a council person. So, uh, because I'm no longer a voting member of council, it can be myself and one or two other council people who might be interested in meeting with the Historical Society. We can talk about that perhaps, um, in an, in an upcoming meeting. I'm almost there. Uh, so, uh, my plan is to, in the near future, start to do a little podcast style, style thing on the website to answer questions that residents may have, kind of a short answer for those ever pressing questions. Uh, and how to find things in our, uh, quest for e- even more transparency. So if you have a question uh, that you'd like to ask, uh, my email is unfortunately my first initial and last name, probably should have been the other way. But, uh, it's easily available on the website as G Katrin Bone at Delran Township dot org. And, uh, finally, uh, it's a pleasure to welcome Marlo Smith, who I've known for some time. I think it, it, uh, needs to be noted that, uh, for all of our recollection, uh, Marlo is the, uh, first black councilman in Delran history. And I think, uh, in light of the, uh, times as they are, I think that's, uh, quite an important milestone to the council and certainly, uh, couldn't be more proud and, uh, in better hands than Marlo Smith. Congratulations. And that's my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And at this time, I think we went through everybody. We're going to ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment.
Motion to go into public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those who oppose? All right, the motion carries. So at this point, it's now the public comment portion of our meeting. Uh, there seems to be only two people in attendance. Uh, you're more than welcome to speak. If you could just hit the raise your hand button in the bottom of your device, I believe it's located in the bottom, even if you're on a cell phone, on the app or on your desktop. If you do, we'll then allow you to speak, we'll unmute you and you can, uh, you know, ask your questions or comments. And seeing no hands, I'll ask for a motion to close the floor.
Motion to come out of public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay, motion carries. We are back in our meeting. And at this time, we're going to have a, ask, I'm seeking a motion to enter the executive, the sess- executive session to discuss one personnel matter and two is Dumphy's litigation, Dumphy's landscaping related to litigation.
Summon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those who oppose? And the motion carries. We're in executive session at this, the note for the public, we are going to leave this meeting and go into another, um, Zoom meeting that is closed to the public. We will be back to close this meeting out after our executive session. If there is any action that needs to be taken, it will be taken in this meeting in front of the public as always. So at this time, council, you'll have to, and staff, you'll have to close this meeting and enter the Zoom information that was provided to you uh, earlier this afternoon. Does everybody have that information? There's no, no questions? We're all good. All right. We will see you in the executive court.
Hey, wait, um, does, does Marlo have that information?
No, he does not. Uh, Mayor, do you mind reaching out to, to Marlo with, with that code?
As long as I have it, yes. Let me, uh, let me get it off my phone and I will forward that to him pronto.
Yeah.
Okay.
You just, just enter that code and Jamie will let you in the meeting. There's no password required. All right?
Okay, very good.
Great. See you guys shortly. Beginning the recording?
Okay, we're good to go.
This time there was no action in executive session, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Virginia. All in favor?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Everybody, the motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, very much. We will see you in a couple of weeks. Have a good night, guys. Thank you.
Good job. Good job.